That do not have access to any for community shelter or residence.
What is it necessary in developing policies in favor of eradicating the need of people living that are today living on the streets?
We must address the need of all the people that are now living on the streets that are in need of these shelters.
And urgently, since the winter is approaching and we will find ourselves in in a dark situation. In the manner of the volunteers that this city has, we have been able to find the resources to help us in our situation. There are more than four hundred families like mine that are struggling to find a place with dignity for each of our families. It is necessary, since that family depends on education, on all and every one of the children that live in each of our families.
It is especially necessary for our children for them to be taken care of and even educated so that nothing is lacking for them.
With the number of families that have moved to other cities feeling frustrated that they cannot find a solution in Denver.
There have been some families who have been so frustrated that they've had to leave the city in search of other places where they can find refuge.
And many of those who live in the suburbs have the necessity of having a kitchen to cook our own food.
Those of us who are in shelters also are in need of having our own kitchens so we can adequately feed or prepare our meals and feed our families.
Since we all have special needs for food, health, or disabilities.
Especially because some of us have special dietary needs because of our illnesses or disabilities.
Please, please create refuges for families like ours. Thank you.
Please vote to have shelters for families such as mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nicole. Can you come next up if you need to, so you don't have to lean over? There you go.
I think it's kind of a total one. All right. Hello, neighbors. Thanks for taking the time to hear from me today. I rarely write or speak to city government because I see irreconcilable class contradictions inheriting your commission. While trying to balance the demands of your constituency, which is vast and varied, with the demands of the bourgeois class, the sweet wheels who clamor for your favor and humble you with their influence, so you know who tends to listen. To clear angles, the state is admission that this society has become entangled in an insoluble contradiction with itself, that it is split into irreconcilable antagonisms which it is powerless to dispel. But in order that these antagonisms, these classes with conflicting economic interests might not consume themselves in society in fruitless struggle, it becomes necessary to have a power seemingly standing above society that would alleviate the conflict and keep it within the bounds of order. And this power arisen out of society by placing itself above it and alienating itself more and more from it is the state. As a worker, I am fundamentally at odds with the interests of the bourgeois class. I know that our interests won't align ninety percent of the time because they are not alignable. Luckily, I'm here tonight because we're in alignment. The current struggle is over a different kind of alignment, that of AI subordinate to humanity. On May fifth, this city council unanimously voted against resolution two five zero four one three, a proposal to renew the city's contract with Flock, an AI-enabled surveillance company that operates a network of automated license plate readers or ALPRs around this city. This council's intent was clear with their twelve to zero decision. The people of Denver do not want these cameras in our cities. Yet Mayor Johnston took it upon himself to work out an Enron to approve the extension anyhow. I'm disgusted seeing our mayor subvert, defy, and sidestep the will of this council and your constituents. Suffice it to say, I'm pissed. To summarize my argument for the uninitiated, these camera systems are a blatant violation of our fundamental rights. Whereless mass surveillance is something the Supreme Court has ruled repeatedly requires judicial oversight or the cutting of the United States and USVA. You're throwing out the precedent of particularized suspicion established in Stinkvie Davis and Naderent in California. You're using Flock's contractor status to subvert the state action doctrine and weaponizing the third-party doctrine to launder accountability through a subcontractor like white-collar criminals. Johnston's payment to Flock looks to me like structuring, something done by criminals to avoid financial scrutiny by banking regulators. The placement of these systems in my blue-collar neighborhood amounts to digital redlining. There are too many employed by immigration harasser constituents like Silicon Valley. The citizens of our city are also more than capable of moving fast and breaking things. But this is my attempt to take the high road. Show me I'm making the right decision. Long live the workers.
Thank you. Next up, we have Amisa Mamo, virtually. Next up, we have Joel Brown, virtually.
My name is Joel Brown. I live in Uptown in Council District Seven, or Council District Ten. I'm concerned about a privacy invasion caused by the Flock cameras pulled up through our city. The city council has voted down this contract unanimously, but Mayor Johnston has gone around you. The Denver Police Department and the mayor's office has obfuscated your efforts to find out the truth and lied to your face. Some of you all as my representatives are being lied to. It is my view that there are safeguards or methods can be put in place to make sure the data cannot be abused under a federal administration. Mayor Johnston is causing the city of Denver to violate state law and it must end. Keep up the pressure. You have my support. As a resident of this city, I feel safe, not because of DPD, but in spite of them. I'm not worried about being robbed by migrants or homeless people. No, my only safety concerns are as a pedestrian and a bicyclist. People drive recklessly because they know police don't do low-level traffic enforcement, hatred, direction. I build no one to make the vibrant Denver transportation bond because it is low for pedestrian and bicycle safety. It does not find division zero. It proposes reconstruction on Sixth and Eighth Avenue, which will cripple the area in the short term to benefit the billionaire Walton Penner family in the long term. Thank you to the city councillors for alerting us to the mayor's dishonesty during this process. I'm voting no on two D. The facilities bond has allocated seventy-five million dollars for a new police training center. This facilities bond also funds deferred maintenance projects at rec centers and other city facilities. These maintenance expenses should be coming from the city's general fund. Go bonds should be used to fund large capital expenses. Instead, the mayor proposes using go bonds to backfill deferred maintenance when this amount of general fund revenue is allocated to the Department of Public Safety. They must say no to op city, but no on two D. I'm concerned about the budget situation next year. After a fifty-million-dollar budget shortfall this year, next year it looks even worse than a shortfall of twenty million dollars. The mayor proposes cuts everywhere except for Department of Public of Department of Public Safety. DPD and gas stations share these costs. I'm concerned about the impact of three ten. Three ten proposes ban sale-of-labor tobacco to consenting adults in Denver. This forces the deficit budget situation by thirteen million dollars in tax revenue that will now go to other counties. Indeed, New York Mayor Michael Bloomberg swiped in with a two-million-dollar donation for his buddy Mayor Johnston in the US campaign to try and save it because they know they are losing. I voted for Johnston. I supported his campaign, but now he has gone in the wrong direction. It's time to rein in this matter with your vote. I encourage everyone to vote no on all the Denver ballot questions. Thank you, city council, for your time and consideration, and don't get in the way of the Flock issue.
Thank you. Next up, we have Matthew Brady.
Greetings. As to my credibility, Matt Brady, a forty-three-year resident of La Ma Linca Park, just a short walk from Colfax Thirteenth and Eighth Avenue. For the past thirty-one years, just one block from Burnham Yard, bicycling and driving over the viaduct since nineteen eighty, I witnessed the replacements of the Colfax Sixth and Eighth Avenue viaducts during the nineteen eighties. I participated in climbing the light rail before the first line was built through my neighborhood. A lead resident on developments in La Ma Lincoln Park am a recipient of several civic awards for my work for Denver. Valid issue, two-way lax transparency, and reads like a sales pitch without raising taxes, and the hassles is used ten times. Just two lines cover the repair and reconstruction of bridges under present viaducts to improve safety and capacity when this is not the case. You are asking voters to approve this bond spending when you have not done adequate research. For example, in a recent neighborhood meeting, the mayor's chief assistant discussed the bond issues. I asked him how many scheduled light rail trains a day go under the Eighth Avenue viaduct. He did not know, so I gave him the answer, four hundred and twenty-one a day, twenty-four to twenty-five per hour during the day, being the busiest section of our T D's rail system and does not include the frequent number of out-of-service rail cars being taken to the maintenance facility for servicing or being requisitioned. Also, I asked how it's safer to have traffic across the rail lines rather than go over them as is now. He gave an ambiguous answer, just interested in public safety. One of your council members was at this meeting. Until now, it is likely you do not know the frequency of rail traffic under Eighth Avenue. The Thirteenth Avenue goes across the light rail tracks with at least two fatalities. One was a Denver policeman on a motorcycle who could not stop in time. Eighth Avenue has eight-ten times the traffic than Thirteenth. And Denver school buses corralled at Eighth and Federal. Emergency vehicles use Eighth Avenue. Our T D has two buses an hour over Eighth Avenue. Taking out the Eighth Avenue overpass to enhance additional access to the new stadium and burning yard is irresponsible. A new overpass for the east side of Eighth Avenue will be needed. Don't say lack of funds, four hundred and forty-one million is planned to put safety first. You expect Denver voters to rubber stamp the ballot issues knowing most won't do the research. You imply, just trust us. Where are your safety concerns? Since you all know me, you can contact me for further discussion. Thank you for your time, and kudos to the Broncos.
Thank you. Next up, we have Peter Lowey.
My name is Peter. My family has lived on Crestmore Park for sixty years. I used to consult with the United Nations on democratic participation in development processes, and I've spent a decent portion of my career working on macroeconomic policy. I'd like to talk about the mayor's proposed budget. I saw the council's letter clawing backs and funds. I have not seen the response from an hour ago, but I'm not holding my breath. I applaud you all for working together to put that letter out, while I implore you to go much further because the mayor's budget is abominable. It cuts election security, it cuts social safety nets, and it increases the police budget. This budget is Trumpian in most horrific anti-democratic ways. Thousands marched over the weekend saying, no kings, but the city is rolling over in front of a strong mayor system. I saw in one of his budget documents openly using the term "right sizing the government", which is a covert conservative catchphrase from about a decade ago, which was used to justify wanton slashing of everything good. If Mayor Johnston was doing these cuts any more blatantly, I'd suggest that there was Doge in his office. One thing I haven't heard discussed so far is the long-term impacts of this budget because at best, this budget proposal shows that the mayor's office lacks a fundamental understanding of why we are in this budget crisis to begin with. For cuts to the auditor's office, to economic opportunity, and to housing assistance, Mayor Johnston is dooming the city to future budget cuts, which will exacerbate inequality and it is quietly privatized, excuse me, criminalizing poverty. Now, according to American Community Survey data, there are over ninety-seven thousand households in the Denver metro statistical area making less than thirty-two thousand dollars a year. And if the federal government had any interest in maintaining that data infrastructure, we would see that number go up next year because of this budget. Hundreds of thousands of people in this city are going to suffer because of this proposed budgets, and the only ones who aren't are the ones who need the help the least. So I implore you to ring all of the alarm bells because this is wrong on every level. Mayor Johnston should be named and shamed at every opportunity for daring to propose something so clearly devastating to our city and communities.
Next up, we have Kara Kara Cock? K A U K, virtually, Kara. Uh, it's, uh, come, thank you, sorry. I'll do that. So I'm here to add fuel to the fire on the Flock safety issue. On May fifth, Denver City Council previously voted unanimously to reject a six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar contract for no with Flock safety for those surveillance camera systems. Such systems have been proven to be error-prone, have misled police and criminal investigations, and do not store data in a sufficiently private and secure manner, endangering the privacy and security of American citizens. Colorado doesn't want these cameras. Denver doesn't want these cameras. On May fifth of twenty twenty-five, Denver City Council agreed. Despite this, just two months later, on July seventh of twenty twenty-five, Denver Mayor Mike Johnston signed a four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, five-hundred-dollar contract with Flock Safety, intentionally reworking the contract to barely skirt under the five-hundred-thousand-dollar limit where City Council approved a new flyer. This is a practice of administrative structuring. Mayor Johnston took a contract which voters did agree with their hard-to-pay-dollar sports and which City Council unanimously rejected without a way to push it forward anyway. The Denver General Services Purchase and Preparat Policy Procedure Manual states, "Buyer shall delegate the benefit on agency avoidance of the formal or informal bid thresholds or City Council required or unexpected by artificially dividing our positions to avoid any preparat regulations described in Article twenty of sixty-four of the Rite Municipal Code." This practice is also illegal under the Colorado Statute of First Degree Official Misconduct, such in eighteen-eight-four oh four. In that section, attempt to obtain a benefit is a key differentiator between first and second degree misconduct. Under such in eighteen-one-nine-one, benefit means any gain or advantage to the beneficiary, including any gain or advantage to another person pursuant to the desire or consent of the beneficiary. Reactions with contract structuring clearly constitutes a gain or advantage to Flock Safety. And the broad language used to define benefit shows that Colorado Criminal Code is built to factor intent and spirit into account. I ask that the city council, one, schedule an oversight hearing to determine if Mayor Johnston's actions constitute illegal structuring to evade council oversight. Two, refer this matter to the auditor and district attorney for investigation of Mayor Johnston's potential violations of both Colorado Vice Statutes eighteen-eight-four oh four and eighteen-one-nine-one, at Article clause B. Three, introduce a pre-deadline resolution declaring any unilateral extension improper and demand that City Council has review for any surveillance type contract window for it. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Next up, we have Maple Evergreen.
Hey, y'all. How you doing? Uh, I'm here to talk about the cameras as well. Uh, I feel like everybody's really touched on, like, all the formal stuff and all that. Um, I just don't like it. I feel like all of you voted against this. Uh, you exist to represent us as the people that are paying our taxes. And Mayor Mike Johnston went over all of your heads and did the cameras anyways. That's kind of not cool. Um, I got one, like, outside of my window at my house. I walked here down the street, and it's sketchy. I don't like being watched all the time. And I'm hoping that you guys can do everything you can to put pressure on, you know, getting rid of the contracts, making sure that these cameras don't stick around, and making sure that, uh, this type of surveillance doesn't exist going forward. So I appreciate all your time, and that's all I have. So.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ross Rolson, Rolison, virtually.
Oh, and thank you for your time. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to address the issue of Mayor Johnston's illegal funding of the Flock surveillance cameras. Um, but first, I'd like to touch on safety concerns. So the Kansas police chief used Flock Safety license plate readers to track his ex-girlfriend and her new boyfriend's vehicles two-hundred-and-twenty-eight times over more than four months and used his police vehicle to follow them out of town. Um, and this is not an isolated incident. So multiple other documented cases include Las Vegas Metro Officer Christopher Young and for stalking his ex-fiance and Riverside County Deputy Eric Biscatella pleading guilty in February twenty twenty-four to seven counts of misusing the databases to stalk a woman at Coachella. Furthermore, in Estenola, New Mexico, twenty-one-year-old Jacqueline Gonzalez and her twelve-year-old sister were held at gunpoint and handcuffed after Flock surveillance mistook a two for a seven on their license plate. Uh, it seems like we've already touched on the obvious splitting to avoid council oversight. So yeah, I just, I think that we need to see accountability. Um, I think that Mayor Johnston is really endangering Coloradans with these cameras. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Addison Snyder. Addison?
Yeah, my name's Addison Snyder. Uh, I was just here to talk about the whole Flock surveillance thing. Yeah, you guys voted twelve to zero on that. I don't think twelve could people could decide on pizza, much less cameras. Uh, what does that say about the decision? You know, if, like, Mayor Johnston's picking up the pizza and comes back with pineapple after you guys decided on, like, sausage, that'd be terrible. Um, he decided to go with a contract for four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, five-hundred dollars, like fifteen hundred dollars under the limit. Twenty-three percent, like, you gotta really understand the audacity of it. And like others have said, uh, in banking, if I turn in several sets of nine-hundred-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars or whatever it ends up being, yeah, I could find here as a federal prison for structuring. So that's not cool. Um, the mayor shouldn't be above the law. I really, truly hope you guys actually investigate this uh, because really, if he starts getting away with this sort of stuff, he's above the law, and that kind of makes him a mockery of democracy. Like, why even vote people in if the mayor's just going to sidestep it or he'll do a little piecemeal or he'll override a such a blatantly unanimous decision? Uh, it really, truly irritates my soul that that happens. It saddens me. I hope you guys, uh, consider really investigating him for that. Do the right thing. Out of respect for other people's lives, I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Gareth Doski. Gareth?
Yes, good evening, council members. My name is Gareth Doski, and I'm here to address Mayor Johnston's circumvention of your unanimous rejection. We ran through the numbers, um, but this wasn't a coincidence. This was calculated evasion of democratic oversight. I urge you, the council, to take three immediate actions that follow Mr. Cox's demands. First, I urge you to refer this matter to the district attorney and city auditor to investigate whether the mayor violated Colorado law, specifically CRS eighteen-eight-four oh four for official misconduct in the Denver Purchase and Management Prohibition on artificially dividing contracts avoid oversight. The statute carries up to Wineland County Jail, and I believe the mayor deserves to face the full consequences of his actions. Second, schedule an oversight hearing to determine how the executive branch structured this contract to avoid your legislative authority. This may indeed be structuring. Third, introduce a pre-deadline resolution before October thirty-first declaring any unilateral contract extension improper and requiring full council review for any surveillance technology contracts going forward. But I want to be clear about what's truly at stake here. When a mayor deliberately engineers a contract to circumvent the will of people and their elected representatives, that is fundamentally anti-democratic. When he does so to expand a police surveillance state, one that federal immigration authorities have already accessed fourteen-hundred times, he's not just breaking procurement rules, he's committing violation of our civil liberties and democratic principles by facilitating mass surveillance that inevitably leads to autocracy. I know many of you agree with me. But as a reminder, this surveillance infrastructure doesn't just watch. It tracks, it profiles, and enables government overreach. It isn't just license plate readers. It can identify cars by other features, such as modifications, stickers, or roof racks. Additionally, it could be just announced partnership with Amazon Ring, which will only further increase the power of our surveillance state. As an aside, I suggest that the council address this problem through legislation in the future. Finally, the enabling of autocracy and the chase of money. The Flock system was essentially designed from the beginning to only pay lip service to accountability. The Flock system and our police department lack significant oversight and accountability and cannot be trusted. You unanimously voted to protect this advance expansion. The people spoke through you, and the mayor ignored both and chose to bypass democracy to keep these cameras running and Flock making money. The mayor should face criminal prosecution, and if convicted, he should serve jail time. That's not vindictive. That's accountability. That's what should happen when elected officials will freely violate the law to impose surveillance on an unknown populace using their own money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next up, we have Casey Cardier.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Casey Cardier, and I'm here tonight to respectfully urge you to decline the renewal of the Flock ALPR mass surveillance program. For those unfamiliar, Flock is a system of automated license plate readers that are deployed throughout the city that use AI to record license plates and car characteristics like make, model, bumper stickers, color, roof racks dense, and make a digital footprint of all cars passing by them. While proponents tout its potential of preventing crime, the reality is that it is a tool of mass surveillance that is devastating to our civil liberties and already has countless cases of abuse. Since the installation of these cameras across the country, numerous abuses have been revealed. For example, in July, it was revealed that Denver data was searched fourteen-hundred times for ICE since July twenty twenty-four. Flock has a national lookup feature that allows police to opt into nationwide searches of local data. This was a case with Denver police until April twenty twenty-five, when the city council and citizens discovered this and pushed back. But Denver police still gives access to all law enforcement agencies across Colorado, even the ones that still opt into the nationwide searches. For example, uh, Denver police shares data with Loveland PD. Loveland PD recently admitted to sharing their Flock search portal with a federal agent conducting searches on behalf of ICE in April this year. Denver Police Department also shares data with Douglas County sheriffs who give access to anti-abortion states like Texas, Oklahoma, Mississippi, and more. And unlike Denver, they store their data for three-hundred-and-sixty-five days. ICE searches aren't the only abuses that occur. In twenty twenty, Aurora Police wrongfully detained a black mother and her four children at gunpoint after receiving incorrect information from a Flock license plate reader, which mistakenly identified her car as a stolen vehicle. She eventually sued the city and was eventually awarded one-point-nine million dollars because of that. This data can't be safeguarded. It is collected by Flock, a third party, and it falls under what the Supreme Court calls the third-party doctrine. According to this doctrine, the feds or any police agency can simply get this data with just a subpoena, bypassing the opt-out of sharing. Because of this, there are no possible safeguards to put on this data, and the only way for no abuse to occur is to not allow the data to be collected in the first place. Now, let's talk about the numbers. We constantly hear the police use Flock PR terms like force multiplier and critically impactful tool, but they conveniently gloss over the actual numbers. Denver police said, as of August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, Flock's ALPRs have been involved in three-hundred-and-fifty-two arrests. It's important to understand these numbers within the context of the sheer volume of data that the system collects. Uh, Denver police scans over two million plates a month. Uh, assuming these arrest numbers occurred over a twelve-month period, that comes out to twenty-four million plates scanned during that time. That equates to a ninety-nine-point-nine-nine-eight percent of all plates scanned not involved in a crime. That is called mass surveillance. Uh, the renewal of the Flock ALPR program represents a step towards mass surveillance we haven't seen on the local level yet. I respectfully ask that you please vote against the renewal of the Flock ALPR program and any other mass surveillance system in Denver and Denver County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Austin Shali. And that will be our last one for night.
Good evening. My name is Austin Shali. Just months ago, this city council voted twelve to zero unanimously against ballooning the Flock AI surveillance camera contract budget by six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. The people spoke, you blitzed, and cemented by your votes. This budget item was on your desk for approval because by law, anything above five-hundred-thousand dollars requires city council approval. But you see, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, five-hundred dollars, that does not require your approval. That's why we're here. Sixty-three days after your unanimous vote, Mayor Mike Johnston, behind our back, behind closed doors, bypassed your vote, ignored the will of the people, and surreptitiously awarded an expansion The people spoke, you blitzed, and cemented by your votes. This budget item was on your desk for approval to be put because by law, anything above five hundred thousand dollars requires city council approval. But you see, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars, that does not require your approval. That's why we're here. Sixty-three days after your unanimous vote, Mayor Mike Johnston, behind our back, behind closed doors, bypassed your vote, ignored the will of the people, and surreptitiously awarded an expansion of the Flock AI surveillance camera system. Let me ask you, what's the point of your vote if the American just bypass it with a slimy contract mod magic wand? What are we doing here? Where is your pride? If your vote doesn't matter, then surely ours doesn't either. According to Denver PD audit logs, ICE accessed the data selected from these Flock AI cameras over fourteen hundred times between June twenty twenty-four and April twenty twenty-five. Federal immigration authorities are capitalizing on these exact surveillance networks to skirt national oversight laws and spy on our domestic population. This isn't about safety. This is about human or our privacy to agencies that operate in the shadows. It's master, it's AI mass surveillance, plain and simple. Turning our neighborhoods into monitored zones where every vehicle, every movement is tracked and stored indefinitely. In the spirit of the great Dave Smith, this isn't about left or right. It's about liberty and freedom versus tyranny of control. It's about whether or not we live in a city where decisions are made behind closed doors and privacy is treated like a privilege instead of a right. You already voted no, and we back you with that decision. But you are being made a mockery by this assertion. And I want to end on this. I don't want any more money thrown at it. More than that, I want Flock AI cameras out of our city, period. We didn't ask for this. We didn't want it, and you already voted against expanding it. Now it's time to stand up and push back before it's too late. Get the Flock out of here.
That concludes our general public comment session. If we did not get to you today, please join us at our next session or submit your comments and ratings. The next session will be held on Monday, October twenty-seventh. Sign-up begins at five P M on Thursday, October third. We look forward to hearing from you again and thank you for attending. Um. Council will now reconvene from our earlier session. There is no unfinished business from the earlier session. There are two proclamations being read this evening. Councilmember Torres, will you please read proclamation fifteen sixty?
Uh, yes, Madam President. Uh, proclamation fifteen sixty, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, highlighting the importance of supporting survivors, educating the public that domestic violence affects all demographics, and teaching others how to help loved ones that have experienced abuse because domestic violence can happen to anyone. And whereas this month is an opportunity to show support for organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, resources, hope, and assistance to survivors because ending domestic violence requires a cultural shift and respectful relationships within our communities where accountability and awareness keep our communities safe. And whereas, the National Domestic Violence Hotline reports that twenty-four people per minute experience rape, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner in the U.S., totaling over twelve million adults in a single year. And whereas in twenty twenty-four, the Denver City Attorney's Office and Denver Police Department Domestic Violence Unit managed six thousand seventy-six cases and the Denver District Attorney's Office managed one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine cases. Despite overall crime falling, domestic violence cases rose twelve percent. And whereas survivors deserve safety, community support, and access to resources. And the Rose Anum Center, Safe House Denver, Violence Free Colorado, Denver Police Department, Denver District, and City Attorney's Offices, and the Denver Women's Commission want survivors to know they are supported. And whereas during the first week of October, the Denver City and County Building, McNichols Civic Center Building, and the Denver Center for the Performing Arts Complex and Ball Arena were illuminated in purple to raise awareness. Now therefore be proclaimed by the council of the city and county of Denver that October twenty twenty-five is Domestic Violence Awareness Month and that the Denver City Council supports nonprofit, government, and community partners in reducing domestic violence and aiding survivors. And that the clerk of the city and county of Denver shall affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation and that a copy be transmitted to Kirsten Decker, Chair of the Denver Women's Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Torres. Your motion to adopt?
I move that proclamation fifteen sixty be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Torres?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm honored to work with the Women's Commission on this. I've worked with the Women's Commission um for my eighteen years in the Human Rights and Community Partnerships and just really proud that the commission is still leading and taking on really important issues that affect all women and families throughout Denver. So thank you for that. Thank you for mentoring all of the organizations that step into this space. Um, I would just add Servicios La Raza, Healing from the Heart Project Safeguard, Latina Safe House as well to that list, um, and Dove. Um, the National Domestic Violence Hotline, it's one eight hundred seven nine nine seven two three three. Um, and I want to thank them for working with us on the language. Getting out of these situations is scary and dangerous. We know the statistics, it can take four to seven times trying to leave before you're able to actually leave. It affects one in three women and one in four men. It affects everyone. Um, and what DB is on an upward trend in Denver. Um, as of September thirtieth, there were five thousand seven hundred and twenty-one reports, which is a rise. Uh, six years ago, it was just over forty-three hundred uh for the same period of time. Um, I have the, I have had the honor to know survivors and I've also experienced the utter heartache of knowing victims. Um, and the statistics are just so alarming because they mean that intimate partner violence has either happened to you or someone you know. It is impossible to get around that. So thank you to the commission um for being brave and being in this space. And I'm just honored to sponsor the proclamation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Torres. Um, thank you for bringing forward such an important proclamation and bringing voice to some of the victims who may not have a voice. Getting out of a very really hard situation can be scary. It can be lonely. Um, and to know that we have an amazing center such as the Rose Anum Center here, located in Denver for resources for people, is um something that other cities don't have. So um, I can't thank you enough for your work on this and um thank the Women's Commission for being here this afternoon. Madam Secretary, welcome. Councilmembers Lewis? Alvedrez?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonçalves Cotillas?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes. Proclamation fifteen sixty has been adopted. We now have time for the proclamation acceptance. Councilmember Torres, who would you like to invite up to accept the proclamation?
Um, I'd love to invite up Kirsten Decker, Chair of the Denver Women's Commission, and would love for all of the members of the commission to introduce yourselves as well. Come on up. Thank you, Council President. Members of city council and especially Councilwoman Torres for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And Kirsten Decker and the Chair of the Denver Women's Commission. Before I go into some brief remarks, I'll ask the commission to stand up and introduce themselves. Oh, you need to go to the mic. Oh, yeah, come.
Hi, I'm Cara Ying.
Mary Beth Lawson.
Good evening, I'm Roto Palmer.
Shanice Morse.
Buenas tardes, Elena Mendoza.
Good evening, I'm Monica Palia.
Thank you, everyone. We're also joined by Heather from Safe House Denver. So I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the incredible government and community organizations, including Rose Anum Center, Safe House Denver, Violence Free Colorado, the Denver Police Department, the Denver District Attorney, and City Attorney's Offices, the amazing organizations that Councilwoman Torres shared with us as well, who worked tirelessly to respond and reduce domestic violence in Denver. These organizations show up every day to make our city safer and more supportive for the brave victims and survivors of domestic violence. I want to share a little bit about the Denver Women's Commission, a volunteer body that advises the mayor, the mayor's office, on issues affecting women and girls. We believe Denver thrives when women are empowered to live full, productive, and authentic lives. We know that most domestic violence victims are women and that one in three women will experience intimate partner violence in their lifetime. That reality makes this issue central to our mission. While overall crime in Denver declined in twenty twenty-four, domestic violence cases rose twelve percent, with more than seventy-four hundred cases managed across the city attorney, police, and district attorney's offices. When we look beyond aggregate data, we see troubling and a deadly trend, one that demands action. Intimate partner violence is often hidden in plain sight, yet every statistic represents a person, someone's friend, colleague, or loved one. The Denver Women's Commission is committed to raising awareness, promoting healthy relationships, and supporting survivors as they rebuild their lives with dignity and hope. We look to our city leaders to make that same commitment, to examine the data closely and to ensure Denver's attention and resources are directed toward reducing domestic violence and strengthening survivor's support. Let this be more than a ceremonial acknowledgement. Let it mark the beginning of a deeper partnership, one that turns data into action, and action into lasting change for the safety and well-being of our residents. Thank you again, Councilwoman Torres, and the city council for giving this issue a voice and for your continued leadership and support of survivors across our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Heinz, will you please read proclamation fifteen sixty-one?
Yes, Madam President. Proclamation twenty-five dash fifteen sixty-one, a proclamation honoring National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas, October twenty twenty-five marks the eightieth anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month, which was first established by Congress in nineteen forty-five to honor the contributions of workers with disabilities to our nation's workforce. And the twenty twenty-five National Disability Employment Awareness Month theme, Celebrating Value and Talent, highlights the immense value that people with disabilities bring to workplaces and the economy. And whereas, approximately sixty-one million adults in the United States are living with a disability, including about eleven percent of Denver residents under age sixty-five. And these individuals have valuable skills, perspectives, and talents that strengthen our workforce and communities. And whereas, employment outcomes for people with disabilities continue to improve, yet remain significantly below those of people without disabilities. In twenty twenty-three, the national employment population, uh, the national employment to population ratio for people with disabilities rose to a record high of twenty-two point five percent, still far below the sixty-five point eight percent for people without disabilities. And the unemployment rate for people with disabilities at seven point two percent was about double that of those without disabilities. And whereas, Colorado was a leader in advancing disability employment with about fifty point seven percent of working-age Coloradans with disabilities employed, one of the highest rates in the nation, compared to forty-one point eight percent nationally, giving Colorado the fifth-highest disability employment rate among all states. And whereas, the city and county of Denver is recognized for its commitment to accessibility and inclusion, having been ranked the second most disability-friendly in the United, uh, excuse me, the second most disability-friendly city in the United States in twenty twenty-three, a distinction reflecting Denver's strong advocacy for people with disabilities, robust ADA compliance, and proactive initiatives like the Denver Commission for People with Disabilities. And whereas, the city and county of Denver strives to lead by example as an employer by implementing inclusive hiring practices and providing accommodations so that people of all abilities can excel in its workforce. And the city partners with local agencies and programs to connect Denverites with disabilities to meaningful employment opportunities. And whereas, businesses that include people with disabilities in their workforce gain loyal, skilled employees, see higher employee retention, and report disability-inclusive practices give them a competitive edge. And whereas, research shows that companies leading in disability inclusion financially outperform their peers with significantly higher revenue, net income, and profit on average, confirming that inclusive employment practices benefit not only society, but also the economic bottom line. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Denver City Council, section one, that the Denver City Council hereby proclaims the month of twenty twenty, October twenty twenty-five as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in the city of Denver, and encourages all residents, employers, and organizations in our community to recognize the invaluable contributions of workers with disabilities and to promote inclusive employment practices throughout the year. Section two, that the clerk and recorder of the city and county of Denver shall affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation and that a copy be transmitted to the Denver Commission for People with Disabilities, the Colorado Department of Vocational Rehabilitation, and the Colorado Disability Opportunity Office.
Thank you, Councilmember. Your motion to adopt?
I move that we adopt proclamation number twenty-five dash one five six one.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Heinz?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, to- tonight, as we recognize Disability Employment Awareness Month, we do more than honor a national observance. We affirm the kind of city we choose to be. For me, this proclamation is deeply personal. I'm proud to serve as Denver's first elected official who uses a wheelchair for mobility. And I'm here because others believe that leadership and public service should be open to everyone, regardless of ability. That belief, that every person has something meaningful to contribute, is at the heart of what makes Denver special. This year marks the eightieth anniversary of the National Disability Employment Awareness Month. The theme, Celebrating Value and Talent, reminds us that inclusion isn't charity, it's smart policy. It's how we strengthen our economy, our workplaces, and our communities. Nationwide, the numbers show progress, but also the work ahead. Only about one in five people with disabilities are employed compared to two in three without disabilities. Yet here in Colorado, more than half the working-age people with disabilities are employed, one of the highest rates in the nation. That's something to celebrate, but it's also a call to action. Because behind every statistic is a person, someone who wants to contribute, to belong, to be recognized for what they do or what they can do, not what they can't. When I was elected in twenty nineteen, it was still legal in Denver to pay a person with a physical disability ten percent less than the minimum wage, simply because of their disability. That wasn't just unfair, it was unacceptable. Later that year, I sponsored an amendment to Denver's minimum wage ordinance to eliminate the subminimum wage for people with disabilities. And I'm proud to say that Denver led the way and the state of Colorado followed in twenty twenty-one. That's what leadership looks like. That's what progress looks like. Denver has been recognized, and I'll mention, that was unanimously adopted, that amendment. So I'm, while I may have sponsored it, all of us here in the dais in the last class, uh, supported it. Denver has been recognized as one of the most disability-friendly cities in the country. That's not because of laws or just because of laws or ramps, it's because of values. Because in Denver, we believe accessibility is fundamental, not optional. We believe our differences make us stronger. And we believe that a truly inclusive city doesn't leave anyone behind. So tonight, as this proclamation becomes part of our city's record, let's remember, awareness is the beginning, not the end. Let's keep challenging assumptions. Let's keep pushing for inclusive hiring, for accessible spaces, for equitable opportunities. Let's keep proving that when everyone has a seat at the table, everybody wins. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Watson?
Uh, thank you, Council President, and thank you so much, Councilmember Heinz, for um being the sponsor of this proclamation. Uh, I, I think it's important for community members and folks here in the audience that within council, we have your leadership to ensure, not just for proclamations, but to ensure that we live up to the ideals we say within the laws that we create, that we have a society that welcomes all, um, supports all, and will fight for the civil rights and civil liberties for all. Um, understanding and recognizing um Disability Employment Awareness Month is an important uh opportunity for council to demonstrate our commitment to the things we say we believe. I remember as a young man, one of my favorite teachers, um, back in Virgin Islands, Miss Smith, was legally blind. Um, and she was one of the toughest um, um, teachers I had. She taught algebra. Um, and I barely passed. It was one of my first Cs ever. One of the reasons why she became my favorite teacher. One of the reasons why she became my favorite teacher, was she taught me so much about life. We would sit and talk about everything, including algebra. But having her there as an example of what our school represented, that all folks, based on their competency, should be hired and that they can have a lasting impact, she's had a lasting impact on my entire life. So thank you so much, Councilmember Heinz, and thank you to the leaders in the audience who, on a day-to-day basis, ensures that we go beyond simply awareness, but we go to ensure that our civil rights are protected and that community members receive the same level of support and celebration no matter what their abilities. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Parity?
Yeah, I just really appreciate this proclamation. And Councilmember Heinz, and I think my colleagues know this, but a big part of my legal practice before I came here was representing people with disabilities in ADA claims, often against employers, sometimes against places of public accommodation and all of that. And just by doing that for enough years, it was pretty striking to me that some disabilities, especially those that are more visible or those that, like seizure disorders, that people have this fright reaction to. I would see people with those disabilities multiple times over my career because they would have experienced employment discrimination again. And that's not the most unusual, you know, most of the time. So it just was really striking to me to kind of get a sense of really what people are up against and how far we still have to go in terms of stigma and those kinds of reactions. So I appreciate the proclamation. I know Colorado does well on this, and hopefully we can keep doing better and better. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Heinz, for bringing attention to such an important issue and being such an amazing advocate for this community and helping remind us that we can always do better. I think people forget how the spaces we build are exclusive, not inclusive, and we always need to be constantly doing better, so really appreciate that. Madam Secretary, roll call. Councilmembers Lewis? Albedrez?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. 10 ayes. 10 ayes. Proclamation 1561 has been adopted. We now have time for the proclamation acceptance. Councilmember Heinz, would you like to invite him to accept the proclamation?
Hi. Thank you, Madam President. I have three organizations named in the proclamation. The Denver Commission for People with Disabilities, Colorado Department of Vocational Rehabilitation, and the Colorado Disability Opportunity Office. I think I spoke with at least one of the groups outside who declined to come to the microphone. Ms. Butler, as a former director of the Office of Disability Rights, would you like to say a word or two? Not three, just two. No, I'm just kidding.
Sure, and this was just off the cuff, but thank you so much, Councilmember Heinz. Yes, my name's Allison Butler, and I was the Director of the Human Rights Community Partnership's Division of Disability Rights for three years. Was very proud of the work that we did. And in HRCP, as was already mentioned tonight, we have commissions, and we do have the Denver Commission for People with Disabilities. We have the liaison here, Leah Hopper-Solomon, and we have a member of our commission. We have a member from Colorado Cross Disability Coalition. And then we've got two of our folks here from the Colorado Disability Opportunity Office, our director, Danny Combs, as well as Carl Catalano. I think it's really incredible to be able to say thank you for this proclamation at the Colorado Disability Opportunity Office, or CDU. We have five employees, all of whom have disabilities. And I think that's quite incredible. And we are housed within the Colorado Department of Labor and Employment so that we can recognize CDLE's spirit in having people with disabilities not just survive or get benefits and get by, that is important, that is very important, but prosper and thrive. And I think that's exactly what folks are doing here in Denver with Councilmember Heinz's leadership, but also 10 votes, right, for this proclamation. And while the ADA is only, only, 35 years old, and when President George H.W. Bush signed it, he said, "Let's let these shameful walls of exclusion finally come tumbling down." We know we are not all the way there yet, and that's why the work of this council, as well as the work that's being done in Denver and Colorado are so important. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one required public hearing tonight. As a reminder, city council members need to turn on their video during vote. For those participating in person, when called upon, please come to the podium on the presentation monitor on the wall, and you will see your time counting down. For those participating virtually when called upon, please wait until, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker. When you are promoted, please accept the promotion, turn on your camera if you have one, and your microphone. All speakers should begin their remarks by telling the council their names and cities and residents, and if they feel comfortable doing so, their home addresses. If you have signed up to answer questions only, state your name. I note that you are available for questions for the council. Speakers will have three minutes. There is no yielding of time. If translation is needed, you will be given an additional three minutes for your comments to be interpreted. Speakers must stay on topic of the hearing and must direct their comments to council as a whole. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech and refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez, will you please put Council Bill 15, Council Bill 1272, changing zoning classification for 1252 West Byers Place in Valverde, on the floor for final passage?
Yes, Council President, I move that Council Bill 251272 be placed upon final consideration and due pass. It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 1272 is open. May we please have the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Council President Sandoval. My name is Justin Montgomery. I'm a senior city planner with community planning and development. I'm here to present the map amendment case for 1252 West Byers Place. The presentation tonight will just have four main parts. It'll go through the requests, talk about the location and context, the rezoning process, and the review criteria. The subject request is from Urban Edge 2 Unit B to Industrial Mixed Use 3 with waivers. The subject property is under 8,000 square feet, vacant, and located south of West Byers Place and east of South Navajo Street. The applicant is requesting this rezoning in order to construct an industrial or mixed-use building on the property. Get more into the location and context. The property is in the Council District 3, represented by Councilwoman Torres. It is in the Valverde statistical neighborhood, in the southeast side there. The existing zoning of the property is E2B, that's Urban Edge 2 Unit B. It's adjacent to other properties zoned E2B. It's also adjacent to Industrial Mixed Use 3, B4 from Chapter 59, and Urban Edge Mixed Use 3A along Alameda Avenue. The proposed zoning is for Industrial Mixed Use 3 with waivers, which will accommodate a mixture of uses with a three-story height requirement. One thing to note, because of the proposed waivers, a townhouse building form would not be allowed on the subject property with this zoning, and I'll explain why now. The waiver language is on the screen here, and the intent of this waiver is to ensure that the site is developed with only residential uses because the property is within the Sun Valley Manufacturing Preservation Area. For existing land use, the site is currently vacant and currently used as a adventure van parking storage lot. It's adjacent to industrial, commercial, and residential uses. In this area, it's primarily one- and two-story residential and industrial buildings. We'll discuss the process for rezoning. The application was deemed complete in February, and informational notice was sent at that time. The Planning Board Public Hearing and Committee Meeting were in September, and here we are at the City Council Public Hearing. To date, staff has received two emails from the public before the Planning Board Hearing that are attached to the staff report. One was from a nearby property owner stating opposition to the request and expressing concerns about the future use of the property. Staff was able to call the citizen and clarify what the request was and the West Area Plan guidance. The other citizen had questions about waivers and concerns about parking.
Did you address those or no?
Planning Board held a hearing on September 3 and voted unanimously to approve, recommend approval. There were no public comments provided at Planning Board. And staff has not heard any other public comments since before Planning Board. Getting to the review criteria. There are three review criteria for a map amendment. The first is consistency with adopted plans. Second is if it's in the public interest. And the third is consistency with neighborhood context, zone, district purpose, and intent. We'll start with the adopted plans. There are three adopted plans applicable to the subject property: Comprehensive Plan, Blueprint Denver, and West Area Plan. The proposed rezoning is consistent with Comprehensive Plan 2040 strategies, which are organized by vision element. There are two strategies to highlight from this case. They're here on the screen. The proposed rezoning would allow for additional housing options near transit within an established neighborhood, which is consistent with the Equitable, Affordable, and Inclusive Goal 2 Strategy B. Also, the proposed map amendment would allow for compatible infill development in an established neighborhood near transit, which is consistent with environmentally resilient Goal 8 Strategy A. So moving on to Blueprint Denver, the first category we look at is the neighborhood context. And the subject property is in a special district neighborhood context. And the districts are described as areas with a specially-designed purpose, such as an education campus, civic center, or manufacturer area. In this case, the subject property is within one of eight manufacturing preservation areas within Blueprint Denver. It's the Sun Valley Manufacturing Preservation Area, which is a district with both Innovation Flex and Value Manufacturing Place types. The proposed IMX 3 with waivers zone district is consistent with the future neighborhood context because it ensures industrial use on the property at an appropriate scale and supports Innovation Flex uses. So for the future place, the subject site is within the Innovation Flex Future Place type. This Future Place type is a subcategory of the district's neighborhood context. These places can be mixed-use and offer a range of amenities and services. Residential uses are compatible. The proposed IMX 3 with waivers zone district can enable a small mixed-use building with industrial uses on the street level and residential uses above, which is consistent with the Innovation Flex Future Place type. And for the growth strategy, we are also in the district's growth area, where we anticipate experiencing 15% of new employment growth and 5% of new housing growth by 2040. Additionally, Blueprint Denver offers guidance related to manufacturing areas, which is shown in this economics policy. The subject property is a small site within an Innovation Flex Future Place type. Residential uses are appropriate, and the proposed zoning is consistent with this guidance and the site's designation within the Sun Valley Manufacturing Preservation Area. Let me go to the West Area Plan. The West Area Plan was adopted by City Council in 2023 and applies to the subject property. The economy and housing chapters provide policies and strategies relevant to the proposed rezoning. The subject property is underutilized, it's vacant, it's currently being used as a recreational van storage lot. Higher intensity uses are encouraged here, and the proposed waiver language ensures industrial, manufacturing, and wholesale primary uses are on the street level for the site. The potential for job opportunities is greater with the proposed waiver language included because the IMX 3 zone district allows solely residential uses and will not require industrial uses. There are also specific recommendations for the Valverde neighborhood. The subject property is within the Innovation Flex District, and IMX zone districts are supported for the subject property. The proposed waiver language balances this specific support with the economic policies above and the recommendations discussed from Blueprint Denver. For the second review criteria, staff finds that the proposed map amendment furthers the public interest through implementation of the city's adopted land use plans on a currently vacant site. In addition to providing industrial uses, the proposed rezoning could also benefit additional housing and can be compatibly integrated into the Valverde neighborhood. In the third review criteria, the requested zone district is within the industrial neighborhood context, as we discussed, which generally consists of areas of industrial uses as well as areas subject to transition from residential to mixed-use areas. This is appropriate for the subject property, and it's adjacent to the same base zone district of IMX 3. Within the industrial context, mixed-use zone districts accommodate a variety of uses and encourage affordable housing. This is an appropriate purpose for a site when this area is comprised of both industrial and residential uses. And the requested rezoning is consistent with the neighborhood context description, zone, district, purpose, and intent, as the subject zoning is intended to provide a mixed-use development. And with that, CPD recommends that City Council approves this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much for... Recording in progress. Jesse?
Yes, I have to wait for you to promote me. Yes, my name is Justin LaShawn Parrish, and I represent for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Movement for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the Northeast Denver Residents Council, Frontline Black News, Chabakas Buckets Prince Enhanced Revolutionary Agenda, and the Quebec Street Task Force, and the Reimagining Police and Public Safety Task. I reside at the Legacy Loss and there are historically black fire points. I was a no on this, and I still kind of am a no on it because I don't really know what's going to be built here. I don't even know how I miss any of your criteria, but I heard something about mixed-use industrial and Sun Valley. Aren't you supposed to be putting a New Bronco Stadium close to this relocation or this rezoning? Like, I don't think y'all really did your homework on this, but you're going to improve it anyway. Because there's nothing I can tell you that's going to change your mind on this. But I would really like to know, I'm sure the people at home would really like to know what is really going to be built here and how this matches all three now, instead of five, of your criteria. What kind of businesses are going to be here? Mixed-use commercial? What kind of commercial are we talking about? If somebody could please answer that, that would greatly appreciate it. Also, what are you going to do to address the parking concerns? Seeing that there was some comments about issues with parking, what are you doing to address that? Have you done the transportation study for this proposed rezoning area? It's either close to Mississippi or Alameda. I'm pretty familiar with that side of town because I went to West. I'm a West High alumni, along with Councilwoman Flor Alberitas. If someone could please answer those questions, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Recording in progress. Lucian Begood? No response. All right. That concludes our speakers. Do we have questions from members of council on Council Bill 1272? Councilmember Torres?
Thank you so much. Justin, a couple of questions about the proposed district designation. I know there were comments that we saw either in writing or that were made at Planning Board around some of the uses that can come up here. And some folks were worried about car-related uses or junkyards or things like that. Can you give me a little bit more context about what's not allowed under this designation?
Yes, thank you. So under the designation, for a primary use on the street level, it needs to follow the industrial, manufacturing- it needs to follow the industrial, manufacturing, and wholesale primary use classification in the zone district. So anything under IMX 3 would be allowed there. One of the concerns, especially with a junkyard, and that's not permitted use for this zone district. Neither is just like car storage and parking. The current use of the property could remain as is if they don't stop operation. But until it redevelops, that use would not be allowed there.
Okay. I was curious about Sun Valley Manufacturing Preservation Area is more than just the Sun Valley neighborhood. Obviously, we're talking about Valverde. It also looks like it extends across the river into Sun Valley and Baker for that area. This was or is currently designated to you. Would they have been allowed to build a duplex?
Yes.
They still would have.
Right. ETUB, if the property owner wanted to do that, they would be able to do that with current zoning.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And just for the applicant, I think that's probably, is that you guys? Can you come on up and just, if you can give me an explanation of what's being planned for the property, that would be great.
Good evening, I'm Mark Homelish. I live in Englewood, Colorado. What's being planned is a single industrial building with the option of residential on the second floor or additional office space on the second floor. So we're at the very beginning stages of concept plans for what that building looks like, but initially, that's what we're planning.
And Mark, are you the owner of the building?
I am.
Okay. And it's been used as light manufacturing so far? What's the purpose in kind of the switch?
No, it's, well, it's being used as a van storage lot for camper vans, for lack of a better description. So that's what it's being used for now.
Okay. And you want to actually get that business in there or kind of modify the utility of the space?
Yeah, that business would not continue to operate there in the event of a new development for an industrial building.
Got it. How are you determining what you're, what kind of factors into either building office space or residential up top?
Whoever the end user might be, this, and it may not be me. So I'm also in the real estate business and recently sold a property in Denver. And I redevelop, or I renovated the four adjacent homes on this block that were dilapidated and in need of repair. So I renovated the four, sold those four, and I'm left with the last vacant lot that we're discussing this evening.
Okay.
So I may have a need for it, I may not. I have had some phone calls from local businesses that are interested in the location. So I'm not sure I can answer your question directly because I don't know who I will be building it for.
Got it. How big is the lot, again?
Seventy, don't hold me to this. It's just over 7,000 square feet.
Okay. Okay. And there wouldn't be any, you wouldn't need to split it or anything in order to do what you're planning to do?
A parcel or something? No.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Albedrez.
Thank you. I think my question's for Justin. I was just looking at Slide 7, and it shows how, and I'm sorry if you've covered this, I tried to follow the whole presentation. Why is this one area different when it's surrounded by mostly IMX 3 and then also EMX 3A? And what is the B4 zoning?
Yeah, good questions. So the rezonings of these areas likely came in 2010 with the Denver zoning code. And the residential pocket that was there was then changed to the ETUB Zone District there for the yellow area where IMX 3 was put around it. So I think it was about preserving the housing there is why that zone district got placed on it. The B4 Zone District is from Chapter 59, and it's for, it's like a business zone district that allows a lot of commercial and office uses.
So even though this was never a residence, right?
This one, I don't believe so. It's been vacant, yeah, I think it's been vacant the whole time.
So even though it's not a residence, I'm looking around on Google Maps, and it looks like there are some limited residences.
Yeah.
It was just selected a whole pocket to be residential.
Yeah.
Okay. And we don't know why that was done that way.
I really don't know why.
Okay, and then, so the parking lot, what it's used for now is allowable in that residential zoning?
Yeah. From everything that Mark has explained and the fact that there's been actually zone violations for the property, but not for the use ever, it is, it's a use that kind of, I guess, grandfathered into the area, for lack of a better term.
And can you tell me just a little bit more about what the new use will allow? So besides industrial and residential on top, could it be all?